Presented by City Manager Ron Chandler. This meeting is a workshop only and will not include public comment. There will be a future opportunity for public comment at a regular city council meeting. Speak, please speak clearly and direct your voice towards the center of the table to allow your voices to be heard by those watching from home. Begin with introductions. Senator Ron, start your report right away.
Ron Chandler, City Mayor.
Mr. Norraca, City Council.
Capitol City Council.
West Miami City Council.
Jim Davis, City Council.
Roger Smith, City Council.
Don Williams, Mayor.
Susan Walkie, City Council.
Richard Townsend, City Planner.
And before we begin, I had a chat with council and he advised that, and I agree, that I'm still under the actual conflict of interest issue that we've dealt with before. I'm going to recuse myself from this meeting and turn things over to the council president, it's Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
The floor is yours, Mr. City Manager.
All right, thank you. Okay. Thank you so much for coming on an off Monday night. Just a little bit of housekeeping. I had sent you last week the slides that I was going to be using, those that I had used and those I was using tonight. I've kind of combined those, so Tip, if you'll hold that one up, your glasses are underneath it. Just use that to follow along. That'll show the slides that we've combined. So again, thank you for being here. As you know, this is a meeting as a culmination and a result of about 15 meetings that we held during the month of July to talk about vacation rental dwellings with business organizations, civic organizations, neighborhoods. They were all terrific. Some were more spirited than others, but mostly, well, not mostly, they were all respectful. The information we gained was terrific. We were hoping that one of the things that we would see out of those were some patterns to the answers on what the concerns were, and we did indeed see that, and that's what I'll be discussing a little bit tonight. The groups that came ranged anywhere from five to about 50, and so we were pretty pleased with all the turnout. And I have to really express my appreciation to Richard Townsend. He came with me to all of these and made my job a lot easier because I could turn to him on the tough questions and he answered them and I got to just stay on the easy stuff. So I was very, very thankful that he was there. He's been a big part of this. What we hope looked accomplished tonight is to say what we've learned and gain a sense of direction from you on how you want to proceed with vacation rental dwellings. As we gain that sense of direction, we will then come back to you with some actual changes in the language of the ordinances and things like that, and also start our public meetings where we get public input and so forth. Now, one of the things that we mentioned to everybody going into this, and I was very pleased that there was recognition of this, and that's that land use decisions, land use policies are always hard. There's nothing easy about land use because you're dealing with people's homes and you're dealing with their pocketbooks. And I joked with everybody that if we could find a way to add children, which is what people are passionate, the third thing people are passionate about, we'd have the nuclear bomb of all issues, because land use is just always a hard thing and people are very passionate about land use, as you guys well know from having gone through this much longer than I have. Before we jump in, I wanted to take just on what we've learned, I wanted to take just a few minutes and go over some of the presentation that we gave so that it puts things into context of what we've learned. We begin each meeting and end each meeting by asking three separate questions. What did you like about the current ordinances and regulations? What don't you like about the current ordinances and regulations? And what didn't you like about the ordinances that were overturned? In the package material that I sent to you, I tried to categorize those based on those discussions. You have the information available for your perusal. I also, we also have a lot of people who called and a lot of people who emailed, and I also included that in your packet so you have that information as well. The city is essentially, as it pertains to the VRDs, divided into three areas. The first area that I'll just mention briefly is the area that's in yellow. That's where it's at. They operate as far as the land use portion of it under the annexation agreement that was signed when they came into the city, and that's which means they operate under the county ordinances as pertained to zoning. Now, the licensing provisions for VRDs are not part of the zoning ordinance, so they do come under the licensing provisions of the city's ordinances. The second part of the city is the commercial areas that you see in red up here and the list of what those commercial areas are. In these areas, the VRD is a permitted use. It essentially means three things. It's unique to these zones. The first is that you can rent it 365 days a year. There's no limitation on it. The second is that you can own multiple VRDs. One person can have interest in more than one VRD. And the third is they have to submit a landscaping plan and then abide by that landscaping plan. Okay?
Mr. Jim?
Yes, sir.
What are the hash marked areas?
Those are the, let's see, I'm going to--
Private and open space.
Thank you. Parts and open space. This is why I brought Richard here to help with these kind of things. The third area is the residential areas. You can see where they're listed on here. That's the bulk of the city, and in these areas, it is considered to be an accessory use. Now, accessory use is defined as the structure is incidental and subordinate to its main use as a residence. Okay? Now, as you know, there is no number associated with that. However, there have been numbers associated with particular VRDs. For example, if an application came in, Richard would review it and he would approve the application, and some of those applications had numbers associated with it, and that would put a limitation or a number to the accessory use. Most of our licenses don't have that. Now, recently, as part of Richard's charge, he has been settling in on a number of nine days, and I'm going to ask him to address that a little bit later as to how he came up with that number. The second part that's unique to the residential areas is in ownership, and that's that the owner does not have an interest in any other property in residential zones. And then the final part is in landscaping. The commercial areas have to submit a landscaping plan. In the case of residential areas, we prescribe what the landscaping is, and it's 40 percent of the lot must be landscaped, 50 percent of the front yard must be landscaped, a maximum of 50 percent of the required landscape area must, may consist of hardscape features such as patios and decks. Nonliving plants, ground covers, bark dust, chip, aggregate, and so forth can't cover more than 25 percent of the area landscape. We ask that they use drought tolerant plants and that when they're planted, they come from three gallon containers or larger. Okay? Okay. Then there are some standard, any questions before I move on to the next part? Okay. Then there are some standards that apply to all VRDs. The first of those is ownership, which simply means that the person applying has to be the owner of the VRD. It can't be an agent. The second is parking, and I'll say it's off-street parking, and that is that each VRD is required to have one off-street parking space for each bedroom and no less than two spaces per VRD. So another, for example, if you have one bedroom, you have to have two spaces. If you have three bedrooms, you have to have three spaces. Okay? Solid waste, they have to have solid waste receptacles and cannot use a dumpster. The signs that are permitted are, must meet the R1 zone sign standards, which is two and a half square feet. The health and safety standards, let me just mention these really quick. These become an issue a little bit later in our discussion. First of all, there are two, in the health and safety standards, there are two limitations, there are two items that limit occupancy. The first is based upon the 1997 Housing Code, and in that one, a bedroom has to be a minimum of 70 square feet, and where there are more than two occupants, then the bedroom has to be increased by 50 square feet. Okay? So in other words, 70 square feet, you can have two people in it. If there is more than two people, then it has to be a minimum of 120 square feet. Okay? And it goes up by each person. That has a limiting effect on the occupancy. The second is that the maximum number of bedrooms is based on the codes that it was built under. Technically, we do not have a maximum number of bedrooms. Okay? However, if it was built under the residential building code, they are limited to five bedrooms. If it's built under the commercial building codes, then they can have more. Okay? And we don't have a cap on the total number of bedrooms that can be in a VRD. Structural safety, bedrooms have to have egress windows and doors. Staircases have to have guardrails if they're four or more risers. Plug-ins have to have phase plant. Yes, sir.
Regarding the guardrails, there was an email saying that we had nine-inch spacing between posts and stairway rails. Is that true?
If that was the code at the time it was built, then we'd let that continue.
And if it was not?
Then, well, it's whatever the code was at the time it was built. Is that--
Yeah, correct. So it was nine for a while and then it went down to six and then it went down to four. So if they were allowed nine, the presumption was that that was code at the time.
Thank you.
There has to be smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, no obvious tripping hazards, and then they have to have posted the tsunami evacuation in the facility. VRDs are required to pay the transient room tax. They're required to be licensed. Their license is good for one calendar year, and it shall be in the name of the property owner and it is not transferable. Those transferability will come back to a little bit later.
There was a question in one of those emails about that, and my question is if you've lost your license, your first license in October, again in January, you've got to pay again because it's a calendar year. Is that correct?
That is correct. We prorate it.
And we prorate it?
Do we not?
Not the license.
Not the license?
No. The license is not prorated. Generally, the cutoff date is first of December, so at this time, if you were to get your license the first of November, you would have to again pay for your license. My understanding--
Do we charge the full amount?
--is prorating the occupation tax permit, which is also required at that. But why is it difficult?
Come on up, Timothy. Come and join us. There's a chair right there.
Chair.
Okay. You may want to move the mayor's name down. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Another question.
Yes, sir.
Before we leave this, regarding the transient room tax, one of the emailers felt or believed that revenue from VRDs represents 32 percent of the budget?
Not, transient room tax represents 32 percent of the budget. Of the total transit room tax, VRD accounts for about 25 percent--
25 percent of the TRT.
Of the TRT. So our largest revenue source continues to be property tax, which is 37 percent. The second source is transient room tax, and that is a combination of the hotels plus the VRDs. Of that amount that we receive, 25 percent comes from VRDs.
That's in the general fund, is that right?
General fund and it gets mixed in a couple of other areas.
But it's not the entire budget of the city, though?
It's the general fund.
Well, I'm thinking the rest of the fund's stacked in there, but you talk about 34 million or whatever the figure is?
It would be of the general fund that I'm referring to. No, no. It is of the entire budget.
Excellent.
It is of the entire budget.
Okay. What percentage is that due?
32 percent.
Thank you.
All right. VRDs have to be licensed. They have to keep records, and there are penalties associated with the violation of the provisions. The penalties are considered to be a Class A civil infraction, which means the license is subject to suspension or revocation, and there is a $1,000 fine per violation, and each day the violation continues counts as a separate violation. Okay? Okay. All right. The other thing that we discussed with our guests was the vacation rental zone. If you recall, there were three ordinances that were adopted. Two were overturned in May. This one was not on the referendum. You're familiar with it. You've just went and just gone through this process of considering the vacation rental zone. There are five criteria that is listed, that is listed in the city's code for granting a vacation rental zone. First is the property in close proximity to community attractions and recreational uses. Is it a mixed-use area that is less commercial than the recreation commercial zone? Is it transition between commercial and purely residential zones? The tourist accommodations of the property would not disrupt established residential neighborhoods, and it is in proximity to commercial zones and multifamily residential zones. We had a lot of questions about this as to what it meant. We generally said that we're not 100 percent certain yet because the city has not gone through that process. Now that you've been through that process, it gives us a little bit more of a definitive answer to say, here's how it was considered by the planning commission and here's how it was considered by the city council. So we do have, because you recently went through this, we do have a little bit more than we can answer on this question. Okay. All right. And as I mentioned, we finished with those three questions, and that was the bulk of the meeting. Each meeting generally took about an hour and a half, and they were terrific meetings, as I said. They were lively. One of the things that we found is that, as you guys already knew, that people hold their opinions very passionately, and despite the fact that they can, it can cause flare-ups, we didn't see that in these meetings. We found that people were respectful of each other's meetings or of each other's opinions. We also didn't try to weigh the opinions. We didn't try to say this person's idea is more important than that person's idea because often it's based on how they felt and their perceptions of how things were going. Okay? All right. So any questions on the presentation before we jump in and let you know what we learned? Okay. All right. One of the things that I tried to do in this, it always helps me to be able to narrow down the comments into what the issues really are. If you can define the issues, then you can find a way to work on those without going down the wrong road and deal with what the issues are. The first thing that I wanted to mention as far as these issues is the discussion on the changing natures of VRDs themselves. As I studied the history of our ordinances, one of the things that it seemed to me on this was that the ordinances were built under the idea that VRDs were a second home. Okay? That was, seemed to be certainly true at the time these ordinance came into existence. In other words, their primary purpose was a secondary home and then they used the rental to offset some of the costs of carrying that house. That seems to be changing drastically, where we are now seeing them as investment properties and not just simply as a second home. That's significant because it means our ordinances are based on a changing market, and it's something that we need to make sure we take into consideration. A good example of that is just simply the desire to rent it for 365 days and the desire to own multiple VRDs. Okay? Those are investment properties. The other thing that, as we ask people, we seem to get an answer that this is yes, is that we're seeing people buying them younger with the idea that they would retire in them, and so they're renting them as much as they possibly can in order to pay them off so by the time they retire. So the nature of VRDs themselves has been changing. Okay? The second is the desire to maximize the financial value of one's property versus the changing nature of the neighborhood. Okay? My best example to give on this doesn't pertain to VRDs. It's the one that all people seem to understand. In your zoning ordinance, if you don't want to have multifamily residential in an area, but your zoning ordinance permits it, you're going to have multifamily residential in that area. Okay? There is an inevitable conclusion that if it is true that you maximize the financial value of your property by having a VRD, then over time, and you take a long time, but over time, you'll see neighborhoods become VRD neighborhoods. Secondary is residential. Okay? That just simply comes back to Adam Smith, people do what is in their best financial interest.
Moog's in good example of that.
Okay? The third problem that, or the third issue, I don't want to say problem, the third issue that we found was the desire to maximize the financial value of one's property versus the detrimental effects of VRDs. That would be the nuisance issues. Parking, noise, the uncertainty of having different people right next to you every night, you know? Those are the nuisance types of things that become associated with VRDs. It was very easy, as we went through the patterns, to see how things fit into these three categories. Okay? Okay, any questions on those? Okay. All right. We did find that there were areas of general agreement. Okay? And we're going to go through those a little bit at this point. The first is, this was perhaps the most prominent thing we heard, keep it simple. Okay? Don't make it complex. Make it easy to understand and easy to follow. I'm not sure I don't miss anything. Okay. The policy question that's associated with this is, and what I would propose to you tonight, is try to achieve the maximum results with the fewest changes to your ordinance. Okay? If you can say something in five words instead of 25 words, say it in five words. Okay? If it's easy to understand, it will be easier to adhere to. Okay? And then the other part of it is, is that if you can accomplish what you're going to see tonight by, through, by not changing your ordinances, through your policies, through your actions, then that is an easier thing to do. It's also an easier thing to adjust to over the upcoming years. Okay? All right. The next area is that we had was enforcement. There was general agreement on all sides of the issue that the city needed to step up its enforcement. The city needed to do better enforcement than what is doing, what it's doing now. Some of that, I wondered as we went through that, if that's based on long-term memory and not short-term memory, because certainly Timothy has been working very hard on enforcement of many of the provisions of this, but there is the perception that, at least the perception is not reality, that the city needs to step up its enforcement. Okay? So the question that we wanted to just discuss with you a little bit is how do we improve the city's enforcement of the ordinances, especially on the nuisance provisions of the ordinance? Let me give you a discussion, a little bit of what we do and some possible suggestions. Okay? Noise, traffic, trash, on-street parking. We'll talk more about on-street parking in just a few minutes. Those were the common complaints that we heard. Our current enforcement is that for the health and safety standards, there is an initial inspection that's done by Timothy, and the second thing is for nuisances such as on-street parking and trash, they are also enforced by Timothy. There is, when he receives that, he's got one of two choices that he can do. He can contact the guest there or he can contact the management company. Sometimes we'll hit the people who are calling, won't call the city, they'll call the management company directly. There's a couple of holes in that enforcement. The first is that we don't get Timothy 80 hours a week. So he works Tuesday through Saturday, eight to five. Many of these things are taking place in the off-hours, okay, on his off-hours. Parking is an interesting one because parking in our ordinances is not illegal for VRD guests to park on the road. It's illegal in the licensing. Okay? And so it's left a big question that I talked with the chief about. Can you ticket something that's based upon a license and not based upon a violation of your ordinance? And his answer to that was, I don't know. Okay? So that's something that, it's an important distinction as we look at parking. If there is noise, that kind of a thing, the police will respond to that. Generally, the police are not responding to parking issues. They are, those are being dealt with through Timothy.
Regarding inspections, do they take place before the license is issued or is this after?
Before.
It does before, so they don't get a license unless you've inspected?
Correct.
Okay. There was a question in some of the emails here about that.
Yeah. Two other comments that were interesting that I should note on it is that we give out the phone numbers of the management company to the surrounding neighbors, okay? But one person can actually be surrounded by more than one management company. So they may end up having three or four different management companies that they would have to call in order to, in order to try to get something corrected. I tried to find a little bit of how confusing that is, and it's confusing when you have more than one person to call, including also, do you call the police, do you call the city office? There's, so that's a real issue on who you call about problems that you're having. The other comment that we heard was, "I don't want to be the neighborhood enforcer." Okay? I don't, speaking as the neighbor of the VRD, I don't want to have to call the city all the time. I don't want to be the enforcer. I would rather have the city be out in front of this, so it doesn't force me to be the one who's always making the calls, okay? All right. So with that, I wanted to just kind of open this up to you, a little bit of a discussion to see where we can go to kickstart the possible, discussions on possible solutions. Some of the ideas that were expressed were better education of the owners, the renters, the VRD owners, the management companies, the residents. Other comments we received were hire more enforcers, or have the police enforce more of the nuisance provisions. Another idea was to create a hotline, so people call only one number, okay? Another idea was to require a management company for all VRDs, not just a local phone number, okay? And then, of course, part of that discussion, any of those are going to require some funding, how does it get funded? So I wanted to just throw that out to you, see your feelings, your direction. One of the things that I did in these meetings is that I wrote stuff down on these big sheets, they were very helpful in kind of following along, so I just want to get your impressions on enforcement.
Well, to me, the big question is, is, you know, in light of the changing moving target, if you will, of what a VRD is and from what it was, does it make sense to retain it as a land use, or should it be strictly a licensing thing? And I think that's an important question, because that makes a difference in what you're talking about as far as interpretations, as well as enforcement, and so on and so forth. And I think that's, in my book, that's something we should look at. When we created the ordinance, it was second homes being wanted to be used a few weeks a year to help defray some of the winter expenses. Then, since 2001, it's changed. It's become almost a business. So then, the question is, is it still, should it still be land use, or should it be a business decision? You know, so I think that's, to me, that's one of the questions I think we need to answer before we go very far.
How would, so...
I mean, I don't sell any distinctions.
How would it be affected? So if it's not land use and it's a business, a little bit more on how that, what that actually means.
I, you know, I'm not, I'm not the legal person as far as all of that is concerned. I don't totally understand, you know, that, like, we're treating it as a land use, and so it has certain regulations that you would base the, all of your rules and enforcement on. A business is, it's allowing, you have to go through a, I'm assuming, you have to go through some standards on getting the license. Once you have the license, you do pretty much what the license standard is, and if you screw up, or you don't do it, it's enforced in a totally different way. If that's my understanding, maybe I'm all wet, I don't know.
Let me jump way ahead in this whole presentation to whether it's really going to be one of the hearts of the discussion. When you start talking about it as a business instead of a second home, and you start comparing it to other businesses, you still end up in the realm of language. Let me give you an example. If I buy a McDonald's, I'm going to buy it with the assumption that I can run McDonald's 365 days a year. And also, I also have the understanding that you're going to limit me to a location that's within a commercial zone, okay? Now, the difference that we have with vacation rental dwellings is that if you are, and this is at the heart of really the biggest issue of discussions, if you are saying that a VRD is now a business, you're then allowing a business in a residential zone, okay? That is the huge difference between a VRD is a business and a hotel is a business, or a VRD is a business and a McDonald's is a business. All other businesses, we limit where they're located. We do not do that with the VRDs, okay? That is, perhaps, the biggest issue that you're going to be faced with on those policy decisions.
In some cases, though, you allow a business in a residential zone as a conditional use. The Dory Cove is that way out in Rosetta. That was a business in a residential zone, but it was grandfathered in, but they also said that it had a conditional use.
Most businesses that I'm aware of that end up in a residential zone are home occupations, an accountant, an attorney, something like that. They're generally not retail in nature.
Something like the Dory Cove was actually a non-conforming use. So it was limited, like, after it burned, they had a limited period in which they could rebuild it, or it was considered abandoned. And that wasn't because of conditional use, it was because it was non-conforming.
Well, they allowed it to operate as a non-conforming use.
Right.
And they couldn't expand it because of that.
Right.
And I thought that was conditional use.
It was legal when it was established, but then laws changed and it became non-conforming.
Okay.
Now, this discussion also takes you back to one of the three issues, and that is the desire to maximize the financial value of property versus the inevitable change it will have on a neighborhood, okay?
But if you're, going back to my argument, if you have multiple ownerships of multiple homes, what you have is an unattached motel, that's a business. And in my opinion, that's what I'm talking about, is if you have six places and they're scattered around, you have an unattached motel, essentially. If it's, if you own all of them, that's what you're doing, and you're renting them, it's a, it's a motel, it just doesn't have to be attached. So that's a business, to me, whether it's, wherever it's located. If you're talking about one owner doing business, you know, renting his home, then I understand, that's a VRD, and that's the way we set it up. But when we started getting into multiple ownerships, those become mini motels. And that's, I guess my question is, are we going to, is that what everybody wants, is mini motels, unattached perhaps? Or do we want to go back to the original intent, which was single ownership, you can rent it to make some money, pay for it for your retirement or whatever, but it's a single ownership?
We're going to come back to this discussion in just a few moments, because there's some other issues that we need to bring up with that. But first of all, as far as enforcement, I guess the real question that I have for you, is there a general feeling from your part that the city needs to do something more in enforcement? Do you want us to bring back some ideas and proposals? And do you have any ideas or proposals that you'd like us to consider?
Well, at the meetings that we were at, I thought it was very clear that enforcement was a huge issue, and there didn't seem to be much pushback from the VRD people either. I think everyone would feel better off if they weren't stealing like victims.
I think we ought to do it by ordinance, you know, even if it's a whole big list of police department animals. So as we said, there's no way one person can go cover 24 hours a day and make the fines so that it equals out. And on that subject, the fines are to go to the management companies. If it's the owner, it's the owner's, but if it's not, they're hiring somebody that's taking some money to watch it, they're going to be responsible for what happened.
I think enforcement is something that you offer the neighborhood, you know, that has VRDs in it. That's something that we can give to them, because they lose something when there's noise and trash. So if we can give that back to them someplace...
What do you mean by "give that back"?
Well, give their neighborhood back, I mean...
By enforcement?
Yeah, by enforcement, just why we can drive on the highway because there's enforcement, otherwise it'd be like Mad Max.
Any other thoughts, discussions on enforcement?
I think there are a number of things we need to change in the current ordinance. And I think the suggestion of rewriting them so that they're understandable, number one, number two, that they're short, short terse, whatever you want to call it, but they're much easier to read. Unfortunately, so many of them have to be in legal speak. And sometimes, I guess you have to have the, but if we can reduce the amount of legal speak, I think it will.
You know, poorly performing the VRD gives all VRDs a black eye, and I think that's why there was interest on both sides in making something more rigid.
Now, you know, the devil's always in the detail. Tonight's just to kind of get a sense of direction, kind of the hands-off areas, or go down this road, or stay away from that road, you know, that kind of thing. And we'll, so we'll take what we're hearing, we'll bring back some ideas, suggestions to you that they are more concrete than what we have tonight.
One of the other things I think was, which came out of this, I read in there somewhere, was a single number that people can call to report. You know, how that's answered and taken care of, I don't know, or, you know, what that would require, but I think that's a really good idea, because they have to call the management company, or the owner, or they don't know who to call, you know, that, one number would be simple and easier, easier, and that can be taken out to whoever needs to be dealing with.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
I would suggest that we raise license keys in order to fund this additional enforcement requirement. And have the industry pay for policing that we're going to have to do as a result of the impact.
If we made the rules, ordinances, we could tier the fines versus ten, second, and third, and just have to be hard numbers, where there's no negotiating, it's just, you get it the first time, you get a hundred bucks, you know, whatever, the second time, so much. And after so many, you're out, you know, use a license.
I have a question about parking. I got the impression that people thought there could be overnight overflow parking in public areas like beach accesses, and I don't like overnight parking in beach accesses.
Yeah, there's, right now, we do not allow the overnight parking. I believe that was one of the...
Is that, I don't think that's enforced.
No, it's not.
But if you live in the house, you can park it on the street overnight, right?
Either the person living or a VRD guest.
No, the person living.
Yes, yes.
That's where the rub is in this thing, because people are saying it's a right to be able to park, if it's public parking, it's a right to be able to park on the street. And frankly, I think they've got a good argument. So that's something we have to, we have to resolve, okay?
Another area that there was general agreement on was in the area of trash. They like our provisions on trash, okay? I've driven around and talked with folks. The one area where we may need a little bit more of a push is that they just get the biggest trash can. We don't allow dumpsters, but they still have a choice of the size of trash cans. And the complaints that we usually heard was that the guests leave, the trash cans are overflowing, and then the, the garbage cans are coming for a few days, okay? That was generally the biggest question, but that was one that everybody agreed upon is that we need a greater, or that they like our trash provisions with that one little category.
That can be solved real easily, just by, if one trash can isn't going to cover it, you get another one.
Yeah.
I mean, that's so simple.
Off-street parking, generally, everybody liked our off-street parking requirements. We did not hear a lot of objections to this. We may have heard a little bit on enforcement, but as far as the requirement of a minimum of two in the one per bedroom, we did not hear any objections towards off-street parking. On-street parking is a whole nother issue, and we'll get to that a little later. Richard, you're looking at me like I'm missing something. City-initiated vacation rental zoning, nobody liked that. We did not, we did not find anybody who liked the city-initiated zoning, okay? Transferability, this was an interesting one. There was general, right now, the license is not transferable. There was a general agreement that there should be some transferability on these licenses, either for a period of time that allows, that allows the current guests that are booked to come, or a permanent transfer if the property is sold. One that was brought up quite frequently is if somebody passes away and they need their vacation rental to their heirs, that license stops. When either, when sold or somebody passes away, that license stops. And the biggest complaint we heard was that there are guests that are already booked. And so everybody generally had a, was comfortable with the idea of some transferability. The question really became, should there be a limited transferability, or should it just be a permanent transfer of the license? Now, I asked Richard to look into why we didn't have the transferability in the first place, and you want to address that?
In, actually, in 2007 is when we put in the, first addressed the transferability matter. And the idea behind it is that the VRD license is personal to the person holding the license. It doesn't, it's not something that runs with the land, it's not a land use approval. It's like a business license. If you're selling your business, you don't sell the license, the person who buys the business has to get a new business license. If you're selling your car, then they'll get your driver's license, you know? The person who has the business has to get the, get the license. That was then initially through an interpretation I did, and then the planning commission and the city council ratified that interpretation in 2007, and then it ended up in the ordinance with the ban on transferability. Again, the whole point was that it's personal to the person who has the VRD, rather than like a conditional use permit, or some other land use approval that runs with the land and goes on forever.
And the other side of that is, is that, is that if I'm going to buy McDonald's, I don't want to buy just the McDonald's building, I want to buy the franchise that goes with the McDonald's. Just the building itself doesn't have a lot of value to me, it's the ability to buy the franchise to go with that.
Well, you've got houses that are in the name of both the husband and the spouse, so the husband curls. Now, the spouse should be able to carry that on because her name is on there as part of the...
And they can.
They can do that?
Yes.
Well, that wasn't the way it was explained. You just said that the person who died, the heirs don't get it.
But if it's, if the house is in the name of a husband and wife, it's presumably the license is in the name of the husband and wife too, and so there's still, you know, the survivor still has whatever rights the couple had.
So if somebody forgot to put their wife's name on the application, then they die, the spouse doesn't get the transfer?
That's right.
And then I think we should push?
I don't think so. I think that's the one exception in it, is that the spouse can retain the approval and continue...
That's not what I'm hearing.
That's the one exception, that's my understanding, if I remember correctly. The one exception is the spouse, but the estates, or the children, or a potential buyer, it's not transferable.
But the spouse is?
That's my, if memory serves me correctly, the spouse is the sole exception to the non-transferability.
That needs to be clarified.
If you don't have strong feelings about the transferability, or not having transfer law, at least allowing some, what I would suggest is that you, is that the staff comes back with both the short-term and the long-term, or permanent transferability provisions, and then just let you take those, discuss them, work through them, unless you have strong feelings on that.
I'd like to see us offered a 12-month grace period for bookings, advance bookings. And I agree with Richard that, like a business license, you don't transfer it, so I don't see why this would be transferable.
But, going backwards, if it's a non-conforming land use, when that person dies, that would become a, you wouldn't be able to be able to even use it, would you?
You're thinking like the Dory Cove?
Well, I'm, yeah, or whatever. Let's say, let's say Business X has been there, and it's a non-conforming use, and the heirs or the spouses both pass, and it's a non-conforming use, and so the license goes away, and then, even though it's been being used as this particular business, if it's based on land use, then you couldn't have that business there anymore. So it wouldn't make a difference with the license, would it?
The, say, the heirs of the person that died could sell the business, and the business could continue as a land use matter, the new owners would have to get a business license for it.
Even though it's a non-conforming...
Even though it's non-conforming. As long as it's, as long as there isn't a lapse, like in Lincoln City, if the use... like in Lincoln City, if the use lapses for six months or more, then it's discontinued and you can't do it. As long as it keeps going, it, it can go on forever.
So, essentially.
Any other feelings, or do you want me to proceed down this road of a twelve-month grace period, or is there something else you'd like with that, or is that the direction?
With that clarification of the spouse thing.
Chester, did you also say twelve months and/or existing reservations, something like that?
Twelve-month grace period for advanced bookings.
The next issue that people generally agree upon with health and safety standards, we really did not have a problem with those, with the exception of one, and that is in the area of the occupancy, okay? Again, our occupancy is based upon the size of the bedrooms and the building code standards. The concern that we generally heard on that was the concern that someone could build an unlimited-sized V R D if they built it to the commercial standard, building code standards. So, the question that is, that's before you is whether or not you're satisfied with these occupancy restrictions, or if there's something you'd like to do that's further restricted.
Yeah, I think that very large V R D, V R D is a real concern, and I don't think that's good for the neighborhood in particular. And kind of my philosophy on it, if it's not good for both parties, then it's not good for either one. So, you know, that, to me, is definitely not good for the, for the neighbors, so.
Now, you're talking about a residential zone now, but right?
This is in the residential.
Yeah, this is in a residential zone.
Because in the commercial zone, they can do it.
And that makes them call a hotel.
Yeah.
And put in the residential zone. If they build it to commercial standards, they can have forty bedrooms.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have any problem limiting the amount of rooms that, bedrooms that, that we can have for V R D.
In the residential.
In the residential zone, yeah.
And that would have a big impact on it, or could have, it certainly could.
Limit number of bedrooms, residential zone.
Any objection to that at all?
And that number's five, right, legally?
That number is five if it's built to residential standards.
And what's the license, the license is, is also maximum five?
Yeah.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that they're both corresponding.
Are you comfortable with five?
Am I?
Just generally as the council? Or do you want to look at this, or do you want us to bring something back with?
Would it be restricted when it comes to the parking, you know, is that being placed in town, so by a car outside?
That's true.
I would clarify that the, the five limitation is specific to the dwelling unit, so there are a couple of exceptions in town where there is a sixth bedroom in a detached unit. And in the way the building code is structured, that's allowed. So, if you were going, if you want, you would need to decide if you're okay with that as it is now, or if you want to specify regardless of whether it's in the main house or part of an outbuilding, do you want to limit it to five or not?
I'll start with five, and then we'll bring something back for you to take a look at, okay?
All right. It strikes me, Ron, that the, the real issue is allowing dwellings to be built to commercial standards in residential zones.
Sure, that's, that, that again, comes back to the changing nature of the neighborhood.
And limiting the bedrooms, I don't know that that addresses, it seems to me we're going to have to outlaw building to commercial standards in residential zone, rather than limit the number of bedrooms.
Well, I have lived in an area where homes have been so big, not my home, that they've had to use commercial building standards. They've had to put in sprinkler systems and things like that. So, one of the things to always be aware of is the unintended consequences of the decisions that you make. For example, the home that I'm thinking of specifically had a, had a, underneath the basement, it was three thousand square feet, and it was a racquetball court, and that was part of the home. The whole thing is about twenty thousand square feet, and it was a residence for just one person, one family to live in, but it was of such size that it had to be built under commercial standards. So, one of the things to, as you think about how to do this, how to do this, it's important to remember there can be unintended consequences of those decisions.
I mean, when we limit it to five, we're trying to solve a problem, and that problem is probably over, probably, but there's, there are examples of places that have five bedrooms, and they manage it very well, and they don't cause a problem in the neighborhood. So, you know.
Well, the other problem is that when you say it's okay to have five bedrooms, that, and we follow that you can have one car for each bedroom, we're talking about five cars, and based upon the dwelling code, or the, the building code requirement for size of driveway and, and double-car garage, you can't actually get five cars in that dwelling. So, now, now you have a parking problem.
Depends on the lot size, you would need five parking spaces.
Yeah, but then, that means you've got, you've got to develop more parking somewhere on that lot.
Yes, that's correct.
And is that, is that proper or not?
If you allow five, then yes, that's proper.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah. All right. We're now, so we've kind of gone through the easy stuff. Now, we'll get to the little more difficult. Yes, sir.
Going back to keeping it simple, did I hear you say that rather than change the ordinance, we need to change, look at changing policy?
If we can do something by changing the policy or our practices versus changing the ordinance, for example, enforcement, if it's simply instructing our police to do this, or to hire a meter maid, or something like that, that's much simpler than going around and trying, or going through the process of trying to change the ordinance.
Or make a definition of accessory use.
That's where we're coming to. This is what we're coming to. Then, so like I said, we just went through the easy stuff. Now, we get into the more difficult. This is where people visit, okay? First area is on-street parking. Now, I'm going to take you through a, an exercise that I want to give our staff, that proved to be very helpful, and ask you one simple question. What would happen if we didn't prohibit on-street parking by V R D guests? How big of a parking problem does that create in the city?
In certain parts, it creates a lot of parking. I mean, creates a lot, a lot of problem. In other areas, it wouldn't create, it wouldn't create a bit at all.
Here's the, here's the essential question to this. Do we have a V R D problem, or do we have a parking problem in the city, where V R Ds are one contributor to the problem, okay? We heard this quite a bit. For example, someone brings in some guests, and they are not permitted to park on the street, but I have four cars for my three children, and I can park them anywhere I want, plus have my guests that come in, and I'm not a V R D owner, okay? One of the big issues that we heard on this one was that what's good for the goose is good for the gander, there's a dual standard here. That just because I can live here, I can create a parking problem, but if I'm a V R D owner, my guests can't take advantage of what everybody else does. And so, the question that we began asking the staff is, if we tackle this as a V R D problem, are we actually solving parking problems? Or do we have a parking problem where there are, where residents, day trippers, and V R D guests, and hotel guests are contributing to that? Now, here's another good example. We have commercial zones that are right near residential areas, okay? Hotels do not, are not prohibited, hotel guests are not prohibited from parking on the street, okay? Restaurants, retail shops, all of those other folks don't have that same prohibition. So, the reason I bring that up is that as we start thinking about how do we deal with on-street parking, do we need to deal with it in a bigger sense than just, say, the V R Ds? We need to deal with V R Ds, because they are certainly a contributor to on-street parking. But the question is, are they the only contributors to, to that problem?
And I would say that I know of a couple of sections of town where I lived when I rented, that there was inadequate parking for homes, homeowners, and, or renters, so we all had to park on the street. So, there are areas of town that even the residences do not have enough parking on the property. So, I, I think we have in some areas a parking problem to begin with, and those are areas that don't even have V R Ds.
Yeah, I see.
Well, so I think that, to answer your question, it would really depend on the area and, and the size of the V R D. I, I think most of the areas can probably handle it, some couldn't handle it anymore.
Okay.
You know, I think a lot of our problems with infrastructure, and a lot of our streets, particularly closer to the ocean, our areas that were first settled, you know, those streets were originally donkey trails and paths, and they're not much better now. So, you know, you're dealing with an infrastructure problem, and it's going to create, and tell you, and tell you retrofit the neighborhoods back, and in some of those neighborhoods, maybe it's a good place to, to put a parking lot in a park, you know, like we have on Tacoma Beach, there's a really nice parking lot, park slash. It's, it's nobody's fault. It's just, you know, your vision's not twenty-twenty in the future, and things grow organically, and that's where we are now. So, part of our plan has to be to address the underlying problems that are, it's going to perk up until you finally get those solved.
One of the reasons why this exercise with our staff proved so beneficial to me is it helped me to, to start to, to not just simply look at it as a regulatory thing on V R Ds, okay? And start looking at things like infrastructure, and other things that the city could do, both long-term and short-term. Let me give you some examples of some of the ideas that we came, came up with. The first and the most simple and difficult, all at the same time, is simply create more parking. Simple idea, very difficult to do. But there were some things that, that were very simple. For example, allow some on-street parking if it's in front of the V R D, okay? Second is that we do not allow on the property, on the driveway, a stacking of three vehicles. Even if you stack them, they don't go into the right-of-way, okay? The question that we began asking ourselves is why, okay? Another good example is, we have our parking lots in town that we don't allow overnight parking, okay? And the question we started asking ourselves is why? Now, we don't want to create RV parking lots, but why not allow some overnight parking? If we're getting V R D, or day trippers, or other, or even hotel guests, or somebody, somebody who's coming in, they're arriving at a certain time, why not allow after such a certain time that they can park overnight? Because we have just simply empty parking lots. Now, I don't know that that means beach access parking lots, but we have others that are not beach access parking, okay? Some other ideas that we looked at were things such as creating a voucher, or a validation system, or using the electronic parking meters that you see in the cities now, where you're not, you know, it's not the mechanical ones, you're just putting your credit card in as, as a way of, as a way of helping with that. Improve signage, allowing some short-term parking on the streets, physical road improvements. When we're looking at some of our roads, can they, are some of them wide enough, FIDAS already began looking at this, to make them angle parking instead of parallel parking, okay? Some other ideas that we looked at was, was loosening some of our parking construction standards. For example, right now, all parking lots have to be asphalted, okay? Now, there may be a vacant lot that somebody is willing to lease to the city until such time as they're ready to build on it in an area. Why not just put road base and gravel and create a parking lot rather than asphalting it over, you know, and asphalt it over which the person may or may not want? Couple other things that we looked at is education, okay? Education of, of our guests as to where there is long-term, or where there is parking that they can do, so that if they're bringing more than is allowed by the V R D, where can they go? I understand that's being done by a lot of the V R Ds, but not all of the V R Ds are doing that. So, those are just some of the ideas that we, we started looking and asking ourselves the question, you know, how do we resolve parking problems? None of them, in and of themselves, is going to solve everything, and some of them would be very long-term and very expensive. But those are some of the ideas that we began to think of as far as the, as far as the parking problems.
One of the reasons why we don't allow overnight parking in those is because we have some folks that will live here, that will live in their car, van, whatever, and they will move from one space to another space, and if they find a place like that, I mean, so you end up with these cameras, that's one of the reasons we did that, is to discourage that.
Is there a way around that?
I don't know.
Enforcement?
A whole lot of cities are trying to figure that out.
Enforcement? Or how about some sort of a validation system for the V R D owners, or the V R D management companies, where, you know, they can validate?
And when you, going back, there's, a good example is between Fourteenth and Seventeenth, in Ocean Lake, like northeast lead, northeast mass on him, and Fourteenth and Fifteenth, Sixteenth and Seventeenth, half of those homes do not have adequate parking for one and one vehicle to be able to live with. So, and they're very narrow, so a V R D there would be, I mean, if somebody wanted to have a V R D here, would be almost impossible to, to park in there. There are a number of other areas around town that are like that, that are, the, the terrain and whatever is such that the streets aren't too narrow, basically, for what they have there, and to add to that would be a problem, and that's another reason why, you know, we have an issue. I don't understand why we can't stack in, stack them up in the, in the driveway, though, that, I mean, a, a homeowner can do that, so why can't it be there?
What was the thinking behind that, Richard?
I think it was basically to avoid the appearance of a parking lot, you know, and also if you don't have all, have to move two cars, you got people maneuvering all over the place into the street, but I, for, speaking for me, I, I'm happy to have, to allow triple stacking, I don't see a real issue on that.
Seems to me if you could fit it on your property.
Yeah.
You'd still need all the landscaping.
You know, on, on the on-street parking, and the one parking space that's precious to the residents is the one that's right in front of their house, that public right-of-way. And you can put up with anything, except somebody parking in that spot. It's not really yours, but it feels like it.
Or glossing your driveway.
Yeah.
So, here's, I'm sorry. Regarding parking in city lots overnight, my question would be, what do you do in the morning? Where, where do they move their cars in the morning?
Don't let me answer that. At this point, we're just throwing out ideas, so I don't want to.
Okay, good enough, good enough. So, here's the, so here's the policy.
So, here's the, so here's the policy question. As, as we look at just parking in general, okay, different, that we'll bring back to you on just simply ways to improve city parking, do you want to also look at ways of loosening some of the VRD restrictions? Such as things like the triple stacking, parking, things like that?
And to answer your question, I think VRD is only a part of the problem, it's not the whole problem. I agree with you.
Yeah, I think on the parking issue, we need to get to the root of the issue and address that rather than just laboring it on VRDs.
What, I would say that that's also an issue with the trash, because I know a number of residences that are not VRDs that have trash everywhere until trash day because they don't have adequate trash bins. So, I think that's another, one of those that things get shoved out on VRDs specifically while residences get away with something, a different standard. And I just, I think that's one of the issues that came through to me was, why are we being held to a higher standard than residences? I don't, I understand that.
Well, I don't think that's true, Wes. If I've got a neighbor who's got trash, all I need to do is call, call the police, or call North Sanitary, or call City Hall, and they haven't even.
Well, with the VRD, you could do the same thing.
That's right.
I'd be right, we need to stand up for both.
Yeah.
Richard? Doesn't our ordinance indicate that we have to have trash receptacles that are enough to handle the amount of our trash?
Yes.
So, why is this whole thing a problem?
Well, we get, we get, it's probably one of the biggest complaints because people, even though they have maybe the big trash can, you still end up with them overflowing or a bag of trash next to it for a few days, that kind of thing. And when we get them, typically, we talk to the, to the owner or the management company and says, you know, it's not working, and they get another one.
There may not be a need for changes in ordinances, but that's one of those enforcement issues. Example, in one of the pictures that I sent to you in your packet of material, it was some parking issues. I couldn't really see the problem, but what I did notice was the trash that was outside of the garbage can. And I thought that's what they were complaining about, but it was actually the parking issues. And so, so that's, that's one that fits very much in line with the enforcement.
Well, that's where we can alter the, or amend, I should say, the ordinance to tighten up the enforcement part of it. The points are, to three strikes and you're out.
Right. Okay. All right, the next issue that we had was landscaping. And really what this came down to was that it was a question of why do we have the landscaping, or is it fair to have the landscaping requirement for VRDs, but not for anybody else that's a resident in the area?
I thought we changed it. We talked about it.
Those were overturned.
They were overturned. Well, that's right.
Those were overturned.
The reason that ordinance was overturned.
Yeah. And that was really the issue that we heard the most of, is that if you drive through the neighborhood, the nicest looking place may be the VRD. And so, it was, it was the feeling that there was a double standard.
I think the reason that that started was they were requiring more parking, and they didn't want it to look like a huge parking lot, so they required some additional landscaping.
In fact, we didn't have landscaping standards for single-family homes at all, and then we put in the standards for VRDs just to help avoid the whole front yard being paved. And then, we ended up with some different standards for single-family homes in general.
We do have standards now for new construction for front yards. And I don't think VRD should be different than those requirements.
I agree.
Check VRD standards against new constructions.
I think what we're saying, Ron, is have VRD standards and residential standards the same.
It'd be one neighbor that wanted to look at the same. Okay, the next three items that we have really get at the heart of, should there be a limit on the number of VRDs in a residential zone? A second and related question is, should VRDs in a residential zone limit the number of nights that they can, that they can rent? Accessory use, okay? That's part of it. But I didn't want to call it just simply accessory use, because if the heart of it is really the question of, should in a residential zone, you limit the number of, a number of VRDs? And if you, and/or should you limit the number of nights that you can rent? Okay? So, let's just jump into these next issues. The vacation rental zone, okay? Again, a lot of discussion about the vacation rental zone. Probably the thing that we heard the most was a misunderstanding that when the city had initiated the zoning, that there was an understanding that you couldn't initiate the zoning of your own property. We know that that's not the case. The other question came up is, is how do you determine it? Okay? And at that point, we said you had to meet those five standards, but now that you've gone through that process, that helps to define it a little bit. And then, the third question that came up was in the area of spot zoning. Okay? Can you zone a single lot? And the answer to that question is, yes, maybe. Okay? Let me give you an example. What you see in blue are the VRDs of the city. Okay? The green is where it's permitted use, the yellow is where it's accessory use. Okay? So, if I own a single 5,000 square foot lot right there, okay, and I wanted to re-zone that to a VRD, so I can be at 365 days, likely I could not meet that standard. And the reason is, I'm away from the recreational amenities, okay? It's predominantly a residential area where there are no other VRDs. It's not a transitional area from residential, from a commercial to a residential. It's not, it's not like a recreational commercial use. On the other hand, if I owned a piece of property right here, or right here, or right here, next to a commercial zone where it's a permitted use, and it's a 5,000 square foot lot of house on it, I could make a pretty good case that in any one of those areas, it should be zoned as a VR zone because it's close to the beach, it's close to the recreational amenities, it's close to commercial areas. So, when we started talking about spot zoning, well, what people were reading, it's not a spot zone. It is, what is the relationship of that property to the criteria that is laid out in your ordinances? Okay? And so, the answer that we all, that we gave everybody when they'd ask, can you zone a piece of property? Maybe. Depends on the area, depends on the nature of the piece of property. Now, interesting, now, I'm going to just throw something in here. Interestingly enough, the fact that that ordinance wasn't overturned actually creates a little bit of, not a little bit, it creates the basis of some compromise in all of this. Okay? Normally, or not normally, in many cities, we're a little bit different. In, in many cities, the city's master plan and the city's zoning ordinance are not the same map. The master plan is prescriptive, and the ordinance, and the zoning map is descriptive. Okay? Master plan says, this is what will eventually be, what this area will eventually be. The ordinance says, this is what it is. Okay? So, for example, if you just took, say, all of this green area, and you said this was going to be industrial, even though there's no industry in it now, eventually that property would become industrial. Okay? If your ordinance says this area is going to be residential, single-family residential, and it's not at that point, ultimately, you would expect it would become single-family residential. Now, in our city, the master plan map and the zoning map are the same. Okay? And so, there is nothing that is prescriptive to say, this is what the city will eventually look like, what it will eventually become. Instead, what we have, as it pertains to the VRDs, is the criteria to establish a VR zone. Okay? That's a big difference. But it also creates the basis, so for example, if I am a property owner somewhere in this area, okay, and I want the ability to rent my property 365 days, I could come in and make an application for that, and you would evaluate it based on the criteria that you have. My neighbors could also then come in and support it or object it, and explain why it doesn't fit that. Same thing if my property is over here, okay? I can come in and I can make that application for 365 days, and my neighbors could come in and support it, or my neighbors could come in and oppose that. It's the traditional zoning process. Right now, what we have is the, is the best opportunity for people to hear, to go through that legislative process, and to make those kind of decisions. Counselor, I guess.
And people would have that opportunity before the license was granted?
Sure.
That seems to be a misunderstanding, according to the emails that I read.
True. The meetings that I attended, there was concern and non-support for the VR zone. And my problem with the VR zone is you end up with VR osmosis. It, it will bleed all through, there won't be any going the other way. One will attach to the other as it goes out through the whole town. If that's what you want, that's fine. But, I mean, make it, to come in the back doorway, you know, five years later, everywhere's a VRD, and the poor resident goes, how did that happen? Well, that's how it happened.
That really explains the difference between what we have versus a master plan that is prescriptive. If our master plan was truly prescriptive, and it was saying, this whole area, or this whole area is a VRD, and I know if I buy property there, I can, I can zone to a VRD, or a VR zone, but we don't have it. Okay? And it would be pretty confusing at this point to try to create that. The next issue that's a part of this whole discussion is accessory use. You can really look at this at the two, the two far ends of this. On the one hand, there is a desire by folks to have 365 days rental, anywhere in the city, residential, commercial, anywhere in the city. On the other side of it, there are folks that, who have expressed that they want VR-free zones, VR-free areas, where vacation rental dwellings are not permitted. Okay? Now, what we have is in areas where we allow some vacation rental nights, and we don't have any areas except, I think, just a couple of very small areas where we don't allow, or where we don't have a VR-free zone. So, that's, that's the two opposite ends of the discussion, and people are very passionate about that. This was the biggest source of discussion that we had. Now, there were some agreements, okay, that came out of this. The first question that you're going to have to ask yourself is simply this. Do you want to allow unlimited rentals of VRDs, unlimited nights, everywhere in the city? That's the one question. The second question is, do you want to have areas that are vacation rental dwelling free areas? Okay? Those are your, those are your two questions on the opposite. How you answer those questions determines everything else. Now, if accessory use, or let me say it this way, if the limitation on the number of nights is something that is to stay, okay, there were some general agreements that we heard from both sides. Okay? First of all, it is a decision that should be made by the city council, not staff. Okay? The second is, is that, let's see, let me get this right, is that there should be a number associated with it. The definition of subordinate and incidental to the primary use of the, of the building is generally thought to be a very difficult standard to try to, to try to understand and to try to meet. So, those were two areas of general agreement. The city council and not the staff should set a number, and that, and that it should be a number. Okay? Now, in our discussion, one of the things that we had mentioned is that we have a lot of licenses where there's no number associated with it. We have some licenses where they applied and put a number of nights that they would rent, and that's what was granted to them. And then, in recent weeks, as Richard has been receiving applications, he's been assigning 90 days to the, to the license. So, I wanted to have Richard just take a few minutes and explain how he's come up with that.
First thing is, back in 2013, I did an interpretation that asked at what point does a VRD change from being accessory use to a, to a commercial use? And I came up with several possibilities, but no, but no specific number. I mean, it was everything from 14 nights up to, I think, 73 was one of the numbers. The idea behind that was, the council at that time was considering setting a number, and ultimately, it did not, the council in existence then did not set a number. But now, it's, it's with the council saying that they wanted us to enforce the accessory use provision, among others, obviously, we had to come up with some kind of a number. So, I looked at that 2013 interpretation, and I also looked for more guidance from other things in the, with, that the council has said, and also other areas of the law. One thing in passing the ordinances at the end of last year, including the VR zone, which is still in effect, there were a bunch of findings, and one of which was that incidental subordinate means small in quantity, number, or extent. So, it took that. They also said that 14 nights was clearly incidental subordinate, clearly small. 30 was small, and that some higher number might be small. So, I sort of, 30 nights was the floor I was looking at at that point. At least 30 nights was okay. Then, I looked at other areas of the municipal code. First was the, for home occupations, and it's an accessory use, a home occupation, it says that a home occupation is not to occupy more than a quarter of the ground floor of a dwelling. So, there's 25% there. Also, for B&Bs, the ordinance also says, no more than 25% of the entire structure shall be used as part of the B&Bs. There was another one that was at 25%. Those are the only two provisions I found in our code that related to some proportion and, particularly in the context of accessory uses. At the same time, I, when I did that 2013 interpretation, there was a discussion of some cases involving a winery, the use of a winery for special events and so on. And I had that in mind, and the fact that actually the Oregon Legislature had said, no more than 25% of their income can come from something other than direct sales of wine. So, there's another, there's another 25% thing there. And those were the only things that I found, particularly in discussions of accessory use, that set that kind of a number. So, it seemed like 25% was a pretty reasonable number. It seemed like the legislature, state legislature was saying, 25% is accessory, but more than that is not. but more than that is not," in the context of the wineries. We had a couple provisions in our code limiting to 25%, so it seemed like a reasonable place to set it. And 25% of 365, actually, is 91 and a quarter, so it went with 90. So, that's where I came down, how I came down on 90 nights.
There's an interesting comment in one of the emails, talking about accessory use and how it's defined, and what is the use? Is the percentage, the 25%, is that of the time that the person who owns the house uses it versus when it's vacant and nobody's using it? And so, you know, that creates a real question mark.
Yeah, and that came up before, and I was looking at that, and I took it from the standpoint of, it's supposed to be somebody's second house. And so, if it's your second home, it's not where you live, so you're not using it very much. You use it some. You might use it, you know, a weekend a month, and a couple of weeks in the summer, maybe at Christmas or whatever. But it seemed to me like, for my neighbor that has a second home and doesn't rent it out, in a sense, they're using it the whole time, even when they're not there, because that's where their stuff is, and the option is there for them to go and use it. So, that's where, basically, I haven't said anything about a percentage of the owner's usage, because it seemed like that's not really how second homes are used. There, you know, there's, I've heard arguments that it should be a percentage, or no more than the amount the person uses it themselves. You know, that almost comes down to a philosophical issue, I guess, or at least a political issue.
I think if we're litigating that, we might be on other than firm ground.
Well...
It could go either way, depending on jury or judge. And I think we need to be more specific than, in our definition.
Well, again, that's why I came up with 90 nights. Now, some people have asked for fewer than 90 nights, and I've said, "Okay, if you ask for 75, you get 75." Others have asked for, you know, 115 or 120, and I said, "Well, you can't have that, but you can have 90 here, so you get a license for 90." Just because, if we need, we need to have a number to define what accessory use is. And it seemed like, the guidance I could find seemed like it was 90 nights was about right.
It seems to me where we run into problems is that everybody doesn't have the same number. And, you know, you've got 80, and the other guy's got 90. The guy's got 80, wants 90, and the guy's got 90, wants 180, and the guy's wants 180, wants 360. And you just create winners and losers, and it's kind of, you know, who knows what it's going to be. I understand it's firm enough now, but, boy, they're all on the board.
Yeah, but, you know, from planning, we have to take a long, you know, a long view in that, over time, we're going to get to a place where, with the exception of those that were approved several years ago as conditional use permits, we'll get into that place where they're, they're all within that range of, presumably, if we stick with 90, it'd be 90 or less.
So, currently...
At least, I'm talking about in residential zones, obviously.
Currently, VRDs are allowed everywhere in the city, right? Virtually.
Essentially, yeah. Anywhere, houses allowed.
So, the policy questions, I've tried to write these up here. The first one is, should the city permit unlimited rentals? 365, anywhere in the city?
You know, I think the economy still drives a lot of this. I mean, I owned a VR, I managed VRs for four years, I think. We did, I think, highest rental we had was like 139 a year, just because that's what the economy drove. You know, I don't, but I also know a lot of families personally, especially in Rhodes End, that own those potion front homes, and without them renting as much as they would have, they would have never afforded them. Now, I look at the math in here, but there's no mortgage payments on any of these.
That's true.
You know, and 180 days seems reasonable, and I don't think, just because you give 180, they're going to rent it 180. You know, there's competition out there. The whole town is going to be flooded VRD. But the other thing you gotta remember is not just the TRT tax that comes to the city, it's all the restaurants these people are eating at, all the businesses they're going to, the shopping malls, the Safeways. I mean, we're a town of 7,000 people, roughly. We wouldn't have these amenities except for the tourists that come to this place.
Let me, let me take the side that we heard in these discussions about not limiting it. Did not hear anybody say, "Limit me to whatever the market allows me to do." What we heard was, "We'd like to rent, we'd like to be able to rent it for 365 days." So, there was nobody who came back and said, "Gosh, I'm only getting 115 nights, so learn me that." They wanted the option of renting it for 365 days.
Well, I think that commercializes it, but, you know, I mean, my opinion.
And I need to point out, I'm talking about in the residential zone.
Right. But, you know, accessory use, I mean, everybody can do, Richard's done his homework on it, but, and the people I've talked to, you know, and then we go and look at the neighboring communities, Newport doesn't limit it at all. You know, and the other ones, I mean, nobody's asking 90 nights that I go along the coast, so.
Well, you know, we are unique in where we are. You know, Newport has 10 square miles and 150 VRDs. Lincoln City has 5 square miles and 500 VRDs. So, they're not exactly, you can't look at them and say, "We probably have more VRDs per mile than anywhere close." And so, I think our solution has to be, you know, what's happening is, is the market's changing, and our infrastructure isn't, and is wreaking havoc, and it's not anyone's fault. It's, we don't address the underlying issues, it's going to keep coming up.
I feel, Ron, that we need to limit use, we need to keep the accessory use, and I feel that way because if we don't, then my fear is, same as Councilor Warren's, that we're going to have VRD creep, and that's the greatest and best use financially of the property, and that's what we're going to end up with, is commercial use throughout town. I don't think that's fair to the people who bought in a residential zone, expecting a residential zone, not a commercial zone. And I think it's threatening our workforce housing stock, or can't create potential to threaten it.
I'm kind of looking for a general direction. Anybody else want to weigh in on this?
I'll go backwards and say that when we wrote the ordinance, we were defining it as between 30 and 60 days. We were told not to limit it to that because we didn't want to be nailed down to a hard number. So, that's why we changed it, or why it ended up being incidental and subordinate. That was the advice from the attorney at the time, was not to put a number on it. But it was a land, a land use decision of what, it was, it was, the planning commission was essentially licensing, or weren't licensing, that they were allowing them as a land use. And that, you know, we wanted to restrict it to certain areas, we were told we couldn't. So, I mean, some of this has just chased us down the road. I don't think any of us, at that time, envisioned any more than 45 to 60 days, simply because that's what was essentially going on. Now, we're looking at hold of the dynamic, and I don't have an answer for you specifically, but certainly, anywhere between 90 and 180 days is, if you're going to use it as an accessory use, would be, you know, an accessory use. If you're going to not retain the accessory use definition, then, then you don't put a limit on it, and it becomes a commercial business. You know, so, I think that's one of the decisions, is do we retain it as an accessory use? If we do, then, I agree with you, I think we need to have a hard and fast number. But if we're going to not have it as an accessory use, then I think it's, it becomes a licensing issue.
Because of accessory use, it creates a limit on how many nights. But I do not support unlimited rental in our one zone.
You do, huh?
That's commercial, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I don't think commercial use should be allowed in residential, and 365 is commercial.
Okay, let me ask the other side of this. Should there be any areas that are VR-free areas?
I don't think so.
No, going back to discriminating.
I think there should be.
Okay.
But, yeah, not necessarily, you know, as soon as you try to carve out a zone, you're going to have measure 49. So, if you're going to do that, it's going to have to be on new area, that you can put it in the deed or something.
Well, I think we have, on a couple of, we have said, you know, that you can't build this in a VR zone, or you can't use this like cluster housing. You can't use still cluster housing as VRDs.
Well, the thing that we...
According to what I remember, our ordinance...
Yeah, like on the cottage clusters, or on the accessory dwelling area.
Right. And homeowners associations can.
Yeah.
For instance, our homeowner association, where I live, it does not allow for it.
But we can, we can suggest that, for instance, the villages.
Right.
We can say that that will be a VR zone in the future.
And you want to put that in the deed restriction.
Right. But I don't want to do that to anything that's existing now.
No. And again, they can form their, they can form homeowners associations, you know? You don't have to have a little cluster. I mean, you can, neighborhood association can turn into a homeowner association as well.
So, I'm answering this only, perhaps, in undeveloped areas. Okay. So, now, setting aside any kind of legal issues like 49 claims, who should make the decision? If we're going to limit it, who should make that decision? You or the staff?
City council.
Staff!
City council.
I think they shall work to a reasonable decision.
Well, if we have, if you have a set policy and a set number, that wouldn't really make any difference. But the problem has been interpretations, because it hasn't been defined, and so, it requires a definition, and one definition is different than a different definition. But if you have a set number in there, you know, and a set thing, then I don't think it makes any difference whether the city council or the staff do it. But...
Well, the difference it makes is really in the next question, the definition of the limit.
Right.
That's really, so, where I'm going with this is that, if you say it's you, then the next question that you're going to have to answer is, is the definition of accessory use sufficient? And if that's the case, then Richard's going to continue to make that decision. Or are you going to define it as something else?
I think that should be the council's.
Okay, so, I heard, I heard one no and three or four yeses and a couple of quiets.
Only because, one of the main things is, is I want to hear the testimony from all people that's affecting before we decide the number of nights.
Can I put just generally, but not unanimously?
So, what's your feelings, Susan?
Well, I think there's a lot, there were a lot of comments that we heard, that they want the council to decide. But that would mean a definitive number, and does that mean we're going to run into measure 49?
Okay. What I'd like to do is ask that, and ask this question, there's two parts to this, the percentage will come to a minute. There's two parts to this. For the first part, set aside the 49 claims, okay? Just set those aside. We know we may hit those if you set the number, but just set those aside. Should the limitation be defined by a number?
Yes. Then we're throwing out the accessory use, the number of nights you're talking about.
Yeah, what you're saying is, instead of saying accessory use is defined as incidental and subordinate, you're saying accessory use is defined as, fill in the blank.
90 days.
Right. Now, it's 90, to me, whatever. We can, we can have a discussion on the number later, right? But what I want to just get at this point is that, do you feel it should be a number?
We have a number, we have a level playing field, and that's why I'm here, primarily, I've talked to, I think that's what a lot of them said on the consent.
When you say number, you're talking number of nights?
Yes, sir.
And when you say percentage, percentage of what?
I'll get to that in just a minute. It's not related to the number, but it is related to this whole discussion.
Now, before I say, well, yes or no, I want to know what that percentage discussion's all about.
The question that has come up is that if you don't have a VR-free zone, should you have some sort of limitation on the number of VRDs allowed in any given area, such as it can't be more than a certain percentage?
Like, can it be 90?
That's what that's in, that's what that is in. So, it should, I really should have, or, that's kind of a whole separate discussion. I put that just so I can remember it for now.
I agree, Jim. I think that's a count of words.
So, let me go for the first one. Should it be defined by a number, or do we leave it as subordinate and incidental? Define it.
I think people want a definition. I don't know that they'd be happy with a definition.
They'd not be happy with it, because, yeah, they do want it.
But they do want a number.
Counselor Agus?
I feel we need a number. We need, yeah, we gotta, we need it.
Okay. Now, let's take a minute and talk a little bit about the 49 claim, okay? We discussed this a little bit on how do you handle this, okay? And Richard, will you take a minute and just talk about a couple of options that we have as far as simply dealing with it versus hiring a hearing officer? Will you take a minute and just discuss those?
Well, the issue with measure 49 was not so much the strength of the claims, but the volume of the claims.
I'll speak up for speaking right, please.
The issue of measure 49 wasn't so much the strength of the claims, but rather the volume of the claims. Essentially, if you file the claim, you would be arguing that the city was, with a new ordinance, restricting a residential use of single-family residential property. And the city, of course, had countered that this is not a residential use, this is a commercial use. That was the first defense. And then, the second defense that the city used was not to change the operative language of the ordinance having to do with accessory use. So, we left the definition of incidental and subordinate in place. And so, that created a second, or actually, a first defense. The second defense being, it's not a residential use. The first defense being, we didn't change the operative language. The accessory use limitation, as it exists and has existed for more than five years, is immune from measure 49 claims. So, that's what we did last year. We decided not to change the accessory use language, incidental and subordinate, and we also had the fact that we didn't think it was a residential use. If you set a number, you are losing that first defense that you're not changing the ordinance. You are adopting a new ordinance, any ordinance adopted after January 1, 2007, that restricts single-family... January 1, 2007, that restricts single-family residential use of, or restricts residential use of single-family residential property might be subject to a Measure 49 claim. In terms of your current ordinance for handling Measure 49, all those claims are given to the city council. So if you have 500, well, actually, it's not just the VRDs that are out there, it's anybody that has single-family residential land. As you recall, there was a lot of feeling that you were, if you were to enforce the accessory use limitation, you were taking something away, that everyone was under the impression that they could rent VRDs as much as they wanted, 365 days a year. There was a great deal of misinformation out there about there is no accessory use limitation. And, but it's there, and the reason why it's not gone is Measure 56, which is about 15 years old. And that law said, you may not change land use except by ordinance. So there was an argument that people were making that we didn't enforce the accessory use limitation, therefore it went away. And that's just simply false, because in this state, the only way you can amend land use is by ordinance. And there's no ordinance repealing the accessory use limitation. It's still in the books. So when we talked about how to deal with the volume of Measure 49 claims, one of the things we talked about at staff level was you could just assign a hearings, a hearing officer to hear all the Measure 49 claims. So the initial thought was, the council would be burdened with hearing all the claims. You'd be burdened with the cost of a hearings officer, and certainly that's something to take into account. But the thought, at least among staff, was once a hearings officer declines, first wave of them, they would fall off, and you wouldn't have as many. So again, we would be relying on the fact that the, the use is not a residential use of single-family residential property, it is a commercial use. And if you look back to the findings for ordinance 2014-21, that's the VR ordinance, and Exhibit A is the findings, and numerous pages there, but it refers to the Cannon Beach case, where the city of Cannon Beach relied upon in their findings, they found that the vacation rental use was a commercial use that was interfering with single-family residential use. So we kind of hung our hat on that case, and the VRD proponents were arguing a, a case about a covenants and restrictions case where the drafter, the ruling was that the, the language was not clear enough, so it was interpreted against the drafter. And the drafter had hoped to restrict and prohibit vacation rental use in a, in a area by saying, no commercial use. And the court said, that's just not clear enough. If you want to, in a covenants and restrictions, if you want to restrict something, you have to be specific. You can't just generalize. So that's what that case actually said.
So by, so by assigning a number, we are jeopardizing our case protecting us from Measure 49 claims?
You're losing the first defense, which is, it's already defined, it's accessory use, incidental and subordinate, it's existed more than five years. And the way it is refined is what Richard is doing. In the land use process, either in permitting or enforcement, there's two ends of the spectrum here. If you get a number, when you go through the process and get approval, that defines, supported by, you heard Richard's analysis of how he got to that number, that analysis could be subjected to an appeal, and then someone would review that analysis and say, okay, does that make sense? And we find it does, the decision is upheld. We don't like that analysis, the decision is overturned. That's the first, that's the front of the spectrum, the beginning of the process. You can assign a number. If you came in and you got a land use approval and there was no number, you still received an accessory use approval, and you're still governed by the accessory use standard, your use is to be incidental and subordinate. So if you're renting 250 nights a year, and you don't have a number on your application, though Richard could still write you a, an interpretation and say, I think 250 is more than incidental and subordinate, here's your notice of violation letter. You could appeal that to the planning commission, and then the planning commission answers the question, is 250 nights incidental and subordinate? And they might say, no, it's not incidental and subordinate, you're violating the ordinance.
But that's for existing VRDs. But going forward, if we've got a number on it, that doesn't create the 49 claims, right?
No. I, if you simply implement the existing accessory use standard, which is defined as incidental and subordinate, you're avoiding the Measure 49 claim.
Richard, what's the difference between Richard making the call and us making the call?
You must do all land use by ordinance. So if, what opens up Measure 49 claims is any ordinance adopted after January 1, 2007. So you adopt an ordinance that says 90 days, now there's an ordinance that someone can say, I'm going to file a claim because that ordinance restricts my residential use of single-family residential property. Doesn't mean it'll succeed, because our defense is still going to be, it's not residential use, it's commercial use. See the Cannon Beach case.
But if we say that we are defining accessory use as 90 days, is that different than if we assign it and just say it's 90 days, period?
I, I think any amendment is going to be ruled, anything you do is going to be, needs to be by ordinance, okay? Measure 56 says you do land use by ordinance. So if you said, let's approve a policy that accessory use is 90 days, you're violating Measure 56, which says every, all land use is done by ordinance.
But if staff does it, then it is not?
Staff is doing it as part of the interpretation of an individual case. So Richard Townsend is the planning director, and under the code, when someone makes an application, he makes the initial decision, subject to an appeal. If you file the appeal, within 12 days, you go to the planning commission. Planning commission makes, it's a matter of jurisdiction. On an individual case, Richard has jurisdiction. Unless a valid appeal is filed and perfected, then it goes to the planning commission. So it's, that's simply on each individual case. When you're acting as a legislative body, you do so in land use by ordinance.
So if, basically, when Richard is assigning 90 days, that's on, that's on new applications going forward. So if we grandfather what's already, what we already have, then we avoid that, correct?
Yes. If you, well, if you adopted an ordinance that says everyone that has an existing VRD is grandfathered at X number of days, you might still get people make claims that you're treating that person differently than me, the winners and losers argument. You may get that argument if you adopt an ordinance and do that. What we had actually proposed last year was not adopting a grandfathering clause, but adopting a settlement offer, which was optional. We didn't impose it on anybody. So it was just sitting there and said, staff, it's okay to accept someone's offer to reduce their number of days to 180 days. It gave, it tied my hands and tied Richard's hands, because it gave power to the VRD owner who got a land use approval for 75 days but was renting 250 days. They could actually say, ha, you have to settle for 180. And so we kind of tied our own hands, made a generous settlement offer. A lot of people didn't like the generosity of that 180-day settlement, but it wasn't imposed. So my feeling was, because it wasn't imposed on anybody, no one could file a Measure 49 claim, because it was simply an option.
But in the licensing, who, who issues the license?
The license is issued by the planning department. But there are two distinct tracks. One is the land use process, and one is the license process. And when you talk about setting a number, you really talk about removing the land use process. And we had actually originally proposed to remove the land use process. We were just going to set a number, it would be a non-discretionary number, so you didn't need a land use process. You didn't need to notify people that you were going to be interpreting incidental and subordinate accessory use. So you, once you set a number, you don't need the land use process, you can go directly to licensing. The reason why we abandoned that was the number of people that got up and said, we're going to file a Measure 49 claim. So we had to backtrack a little bit and say, okay, we don't want to deal with a flood of Measure 49 claims, even though we felt that they were not good claims. There'd still be a right of volume.
But if our ordinance says that a commercial business can only operate X amount of time in a residential zone, and we license it at that, that percentage, like every other business in the residential zone, where would the Measure 49 claim come?
Measure 49 claim comes because you'd be adopting a new ordinance that restricts, what they will argue is residential use. We will argue it is not residential use, it's commercial use.
I, I get what you're saying. I was trying to figure, yeah, I get it.
I don't believe it's a good argument, but it is still an argument, and if they have an argument they think is colorable, they make a Measure 49 claim, you have to process the claim.
Right.
And so you're going to be, and the way your ordinance is, you guys get to see all those claims. You could amend the ordinance and designate a hearings officer, and that hearings officer could be an attorney, and then he'd hear all the claims and issue opinions, and you'd simply have to pay the bill.
Not only that, but if we lose those claims, we have to pay the penalty. So whatever the-
Yes. The Measure 49 is essentially, this was the value of my property before you adopted that ordinance, this is the value of my property after you adopted it, pay me the difference. Or waive the regulation.
So it's a double hit. You've got the attorney fees, plus you've got the chance of losing to get the other money.
Yeah, that's a monetary risk.
Yep. So what I'm going to propose that we do on this is that we'll come back with some information on, an analysis on what happens if you set the number versus what happens if you don't change the ordinance, and it just simply goes to the planning, the planning director's decision, okay? Now, the next question-
Before, before we need this, I'm going to change my vote on the number. But that's just one out of seven.
Well, I agree with you.
The next question we want, yes?
I had a couple of questions. When they, when they file a Measure 49 claim, is there an appeal fee? Is there a fee associated with that?
I never dealt with one.
And who would it go to?
Will you make it on? That's some research we have to do.
And, and VRDs are licensed annually, correct?
Are licensed what?
Annually?
Yes.
So every January, they determine the number of nights?
No, not in our practice in the past.
They just continue with the same number they-
Or they just continue with incidental and subordinate. No numbers.
Accessory use is land use versus license.
So the, the license has a number?
The land use approval has a number. The license is-
The license has a number.
Basically like a business license.
Okay.
And if I may, Richard, what makes VRDs of land use matter?
Well, it's, it's, it's a use of property. So it's, in that sense, and then we, we have standards that have to be met in order to get that use approved, and there's a land use process for that.
So let me ask the next question, then. One of the recommendations that we heard was to limit the percentage of VRDs that you can have in any given residential area. Is that something you are interested in?
Just by way of example, some places, like Bend, doesn't let you be within 250 feet of another VRD. And Cannon Beach, of course, has a cap on the absolute number there can be, period. And then they have, when one is given up, then they have a lottery for, for that, that one. So see who gets the next one.
Am I good with there, or do you want us to do any work on that?
Do work on it. We, we have spoken, one of the things I was hoping for was, what are some of the other coastal cities doing? What are the other tourist communities doing?
But I'd rather say comparison seaside with nothing like Cannon Beach, something like that.
All right, I'll do some, we'll do some work on it.
Well, I can, anybody that's attracting tourists, this is a national issue. It's not just here.
Yeah, even, I was looking into this, even Duluth, Minnesota, that vacation wonderland, has a VRD problem. And they're going through exactly the same thing we're going through.
Yes, sir. If we decide yes on a percentage run, we are changing the ordinance, thereby exposing us to Measure 49 claims, correct?
I'm going to let our attorney answer that question.
Any new ordinance?
Any new ordinance, thank you.
All right. I've been told that grandfathering is the wrong word, but I don't know a different word to use. One of the issues that essentially the city created was the starting of the enforcement of the accessory use. And that, from everything I've heard, has created much of the, much of the problems that we've been facing. And, and where people have been renting for more than what would be defined as accessory use, and then we have now simply clamped down on that. If we are tightening up, or continuing to tighten up the accessory use provisions, whatever that ultimately is defined in, should there be a grandfathering clause for those who are currently operating VRDs? Again, grandfathering is the wrong word. I don't know what word to use, so that's the one I'll just use.
And we would be grandfathering what?
It would be the number of nights you would be able to rent.
For existing VRDs.
For existing VRDs, not new VRDs, for existing VRDs.
I think that since we allowed that to happen, that we created a much bigger problem if we don't grandfather.
I think we're limited on how many years we grandfather.
Well, yeah, I could go for 10 years or something like that, because you've got people who've made sizable investments in property, and then all of a sudden just pull the rug out from underneath them and say, well, I'm sorry, but you can no longer rent like you used to, so now you're going to have to come find some other source of income to make your payments and so on. I just don't think that's right. We allowed this to happen over time. So I think we've created a monster. I think we need to, to deal with it.
I, I don't disagree with you, but by the same token, the ordinance was there.
I know.
You know, and I think that's one of the things that irritates me, is the ordinance was always there.
Me too.
And it just stuns me that people say, well, I didn't know that. Well, you know, that's why the ordinances are there.
That'd be an entour.
If you're driving down the road and you do 60 in a 30, you don't get to say, well, I didn't know that there was a sign back there that I forgot to read. You get charged for 30, so whatever you're doing, you know. I'm not opposed to do what you just said of doing, but it does irritate me that people don't pay attention and then-
I think that Rhodes End is an exception to all that.
Pardon?
I think Rhodes End is an exception to all that.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah, Rhodes End is a whole different ballgame in my estimation, because they were, you know, doing what they were doing within the county framework, and, you know, I, I have some, have issues with trying to enforce anything out there until down the road, you know, because there's-
Most of the places out there are not going to make department standard.
No.
No room.
Are there any objections? No, I'm sorry, Counselor?
I don't know. I, a VRD is just a house. It's the activity in that that is- It's the activity in that that is disruptive or productive, one of the two. And I don't necessarily see, I see a lot of advantages in thriving VRDs if they're managed correctly and it won't hurt the neighborhood. I see that, I think we owe it to ourselves to milk that cow, you know, but just I just, I would hate just to throw the baby out with the bathwater on there. There are some very good things and some of the VRDs bring in groups that would not have them. I find myself arguing here for, I mean, my history has been the opposite, but, you know, I'm just, I'm concerned, I think we have to behave, watch out for two interests. One is the neighborhood and I believe they're the first. I mean, they're like the Native Americans, you know, they've got first claim on them. But there's also a lot of VRDs are bringing in church groups and these different groups and people that we would not have seen otherwise. And as long as they can be well managed, I think there are benefit, can be a benefit to the neighborhood and definitely a benefit to the local economy.
As you said earlier, I think the best thing we can do for the neighborhoods is to put some enforcement down where it's simple and easy and done regularly.
So bring back some options?
I do have an exception to your?
Go ahead.
VRD is only a home because some are not built as a home. They're built as a structure.
I mean, it's just only a structure is what it is.
Which is another thing which irritates me because they were never a lot, they were never supposed to be ever built as VRDs. They were always supposed to be simple, you know, homes. And that's another.
I agree, but I mean, if in this VRD, there's windows open and there was somebody that was throwing money to the streets, we would love that.
Oh, yeah.
And they are.
Okay, let's move to the last topic that I have for tonight and that's penalties. Right now, as I mentioned, the penalties for any of the violations of the VRD is a class A infraction, which means it's your licenses subject to suspension or revocation plus there's a $1,000 fine and each day the violation continues to count as a separate Many of the comments that we heard about this was on the one side, yes, there needs to be good enforcement and there needs to be good penalties, penalties that give some sting. The other side we heard was, you know, the penalties really don't fit the crime, okay? And hitting people up with tens of thousands of dollars in fines is seems to be excessive. As I looked at this, I kind of separated the two, I kind of separated it out into two categories. One is things you can deal with immediately and one is more long-term dealing with things. The nuisance provisions are more immediate, okay? And the $1,000 a day, the going through the suspension, that's kind of a long-term process. And so I looked at it as, should we deal with the nuisance provisions differently than we deal with the limitation accessory use, which is kind of more of a long-term on that? And so some of the suggestions that we had was three strikes, you're out, bona fide, verified complaints. If you get so many, then, you know, then your license becomes subject to suspension for 30 days or a longer period. So I guess quite the policy question and then before I ask the policy question, when we look at something like accessory use, which is the violation of the number of days on the limitation, you're looking at that after the fact, okay? At the end of a quarter or at the end of some period of time, or the end of some period of time when the number of days comes to them, we're going to ask for their records, we're going to audit it and then determine whether or not they went over their limit. In that case, I think that the $1,000 a day is an adequate fine, but it should have a cap. I don't think we have to be getting into a $100,000 fine, $50,000 fines, there should be some sort of cap. I don't know what that number is, but that's just my opinion on that. So my, so the policy question that I have for you is, should we separate those into two separate categories?
I agree.
I agree that the rubbish or whatever you want to call it, the nuisance thing, I should be, that's a totally different thing than working too many nights, you know. I mean, that's.
Wes, I'm not so sure. If you've got somebody who consistently has a garbage violation and they don't take care of it, and it just happens week after week after week. They should use their licenses because they're not, they're not taking care of it.
But he's saying that would be a long-term.
Well, let's do something. How do we separate that?
Well, I've often heard, I've often heard do what Newport does. Newport's is actually pretty punitive. One verified violation is a warning within a year. Second violation within a warning, your license is suspended for 30 days. Third violation is revoked for the remainder of the year. Those are, those are tough penalties.
Our original standards were three, Duluth a license, you know, hold them. And on the planning commission, we did hold the licenses of two or the permits or whatever of two different VRDs for violations. So it has been done before and that's, that was our standard to give it.
The difficulty in the enforcement is that you can get bogus complaints and you don't want to penalize good VRD managers because of somebody's got a burn on their pants.
Well, that's why we need to get out there. If there's a complaint, we need to go to it and check it out. We need to do it that day, not wait three days.
So I guess the question, do you want us to bring something back to you that has the split between those?
You know, one thing I would like to see, Ron, is, you know, I understand why we do things, at least I think they do, but, you know, right now we have maximum penalties, which are very frightening, but they're there and they are the maximum penalties. But in reality, that's this big, well, we're fineing them $100,000. But in reality, if you follow that through, the fine ends up to be like 250 bucks or twenty eight cents. I'd rather issue them the fine of 500 bucks or whatever and hold it. I mean, you know, have our, have our judge actually hold that fine. Let's go to Madison.
Yeah.
Good.
$50, $100 a second.
Whatever it be, yeah. Not for a third.
But that would also pay for the police going out there and stuff. Yeah, we support that.
It's the type of people that are there.
The bad guys, you know, so everybody's being for it.
Okay. Any other feelings, comments about penalties? Okay, that completes it.
Well, I've got a question for you. That's on this working draft number 10. Why did you include that in the back?
That was me.
I know.
Because it was one of the, some of the material that I received.
I thought you included that.
I did include it in your pack.
I thought maybe you wanted us to deal with it.
No, well, yes, no.
Oh, I've been all your working drafts.
By the law, same place.
I gave you a lot of material and I, quite frankly, I really wasn't expecting you to have digested all of this by tonight. So as we're working on this, if there's other information that as you go through these, I think that Counsel Ward has some wonderful ideas in his working draft that that very well could end up as part of, part of any changes we make. Some of the, some of the emails I received had some really terrific compromises and suggestions in it. So as we start putting those together, we'll be drawing from different ideas on, on how to take where your policy directions is just given to us and now translate it into something that's workable.
For the rest of the council, I don't have a big ownership in that, you know, their ideas. I just put them out there. That's why there's 10, because there are times somebody had a criticism and I wanted to add something, it wouldn't end in there. And it's not going to hurt my feelings if it just goes into the waste basket, but it would hurt my feelings if you didn't read it and then throw it away.
I think, I think there's some, some potential.
Yeah.
So what we'll do is all of those different suggestions, anything that you want to send my way, research that people have given to me, for example, Ross Smith has given me some information. All of this information, we'll start taking a look at that to try to put something that is workable based upon the direction you received tonight and then start bringing that back to you. Yes, sir.
Ron, I'd like to see a, an opinion from staff regarding Kip's proposal.
Okay.
And the consequences of adopting it. And if it's feasible to adopt it.
Okay.
Wait a minute, she's getting some.
No, no, couldn't hear you.
The measure 49 claims, it's a minimum of $750 and it was adopted in 2008 and they, and all of the fees for processing a claim is included no matter what it costs. So the base fee is 750, but whatever it costs for an appraiser, an engineer, or any additional cost they have to be paid for.
The applicant has the base fee? And where does that $750 go? To the city or the state or?
The 750 is the base fee that they have to pay, but if the cost city's costs for processing a claim exceeds the base fee, you can include the cost for specialty, that will not be due to purpose provided by staff, public boards, engineers, and it goes on to an appraiser, attorney, engineer, government inspector, practical consultant, hardware, etc.
So that $750 plus fee?
It goes to the city.
Would help pay for our hearings officer.
I'd have to look at it, but that's the application fee. But there may be other costs.
Regarding compromise, Ron, I'd like to quote Mr. Joe Hinton, who sent us an email. I feel like he does, that accessory use is a compromise. Allowing any business activity in a residential zone constitutes, to my mind, it is compromising. And reading through your information, I saw very few compromises that were proposed by residents.
Interestingly enough, we didn't get a lot of compromise. We got more in the emails than we did during the discussions, but what we did here was, here's where we won't compromise. Well, and they're on polar opposite ends of it, which means that's the area where you're going to have to find a compromise or you're, or you're really going to create some winners and losers out of it. So what was not said turned out to be that, was said to me loud and clear. That's what makes your guys' jobs so much fun. Oh, yeah, so you pass those on. One more thing, Chris, it's great.
In some of my background research, I happened to come across this brochure put out by the city of La Quinta in California. They call it their good neighbor brochure for vacation rentals. And just, it's, it's a, you know, welcome to the city and have a good time, but don't forget you're in a, you're in a neighborhood, residential neighborhood and here's some rules and be aware. So it's sort of an educational piece that VRD renters get when they, when they go and rent. I just thought it's an example of something that can be out there. Thought you might find it in a year.
Yeah, definitely.
La Quinta, California?
I also know that the VRD next door to me has big signs, do not use the hot tub after 10 o'clock, it'll be fine and all this stuff. There, there are two or three of them. So I don't know how big those have to be.
Hey, Richard? Richard, could you get a copy of their VRD ordinance?
I could.
Why don't you ask them for that and see what they've got in the way of accessory use or days or whatever?
Yeah, there's, you know, there's hundreds of them all over the country. Basically, as I said, any place that's worth going on vacation to is addressing this issue.
But just looking at this, it looks to me like they've really studied this thing. I mean, they're talking about the very same thing we got, trash, parking and all the worst.
Yeah, and the issues are universal. Trash, parking, noise.
If somebody solved it, it sure make our job. Do what they did.
Yeah.
Well, it sort of depends on where you're coming from, whether they've solved it or not.
That's true. We are adjourned.
They have the first.
They're really good.
Vacation rental.
Yeah. They have, you can't have more than 14. How many bedrooms? You can't have more than 14.
14, yeah.